7:05.
If we could begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, if we could stand and have our student leaders read this about. Thank you.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. In the United States of America, in the Republic which stands one nation under God, into the soul of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd also like to have a moment of silence in memory of Anthony Tony Morton, age eighty-eight of Southington. He passed away on November first, two thousand twenty twenty, after a year long. Retirement from Pratt &amp; Whitney Aircraft, he dedicated himself to youth sports and coaching until his sports passion turned into tennis. In two thousand and seven, he became the Southington High School Boys Head Tennis Coach. During his thirteen years as head coach, Tony led the team to more than one hundred wins and a spot in the state championship year after year until his retirement in two thousand and twenty. He is survived by his wife Sylvia of sixty-five years, along with his children and grandchildren. He was well respected and loved by his players, their families, and all who knew him. A moment of silence in memory of Tony. Thank you. Okay, moving on, we next will turn this over to Mr. Canellin for our celebration of excellence.
Thank you, Mrs. Carmody. So always one of the most fun things that the board gets to do is bring students in and celebrate achievements, big and small. This one happens to be a pretty big one, and what I would like to do, as I always do with the high school, is I would like to ask Mr. Pepe to introduce Mrs. Osias and our Blue Knights Marching Band, although neither Mrs. Osias nor the Blue Knights Marching Band need much introduction to any of us. But Mr. Pepe, if you would do that, and then we'll ask Mrs. Osias to tell us a little bit about the performance, the season, if you will, and I use that term in quotes, of course, and the latest competition. So, Mr. Pepe, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Canellin. It is absolutely my pleasure to introduce Mrs. Osias. I also saw Mr. Stupler is on the call, and there are a variety of other names. It's going to be a challenge to Mrs. Osias to name all of the backers and the supporters because, as Mr. Canellin said, the Southington Blue Knight Marching Band is incredibly popular, and we are very proud to present them to you tonight. So, Mrs. Osias, the floor is yours.
Thank you, everybody, so much for inviting us here tonight. The season was, we always call it the one to remember, but one will never forget, that's for sure, because of all the challenges we went through. But your students of Southington rose to the challenge. I mean, there's no other way to put it. They were incredible from day one. They came in with positive attitudes. They came in, you know, not expecting much, but hoping, and they came in with dedication and fearlessness. And that went a long way this season. So, you know, it started off, we started back in April, or August, rather. August tenth was our starting date. And as you know, that was kind of in the middle of getting ready for school, and we weren't sure how everything was going to go. But, you know, the parents were supportive, the administration was supportive, the board was supportive. And because of that, we were able to accomplish more than I could have imagined for the season. So, just to give a little background about this season, obviously, there weren't any in-person competitions. You know, we did rehearse, kind of separate at first. You know, we had to follow our mitigation strategies and go through everything very carefully, especially at the beginning. As we got through the season, we were able to do more and more, which was a positive experience for the students because they did get that marching band experience. You know, I was afraid we're going to get through the season and only have the ability to do music and marching and never be able to put them together. But we were able to, and it was amazing. So, the season was a virtual competition season. And what that included was our students putting together a show like normal. It was a shorter show than we normally do. Usually, it's about ten minutes long. This year was a couple minutes long. It still took a tremendous amount of work, though, just because of all the issues that we had playing. At first, obviously, we had bell covers and masks and all that kind of stuff. But as we went through the season, we submitted videos to U.S. bands. And what would happen is the judges would adjudicate and give us feedback. And so each week that we submitted videos, we'd get three or four tapes of feedback. Students would listen to it, take those critiques, move on, and then we were able to submit our video for states. And we won Connecticut.
Right.
It was fantastic. I appreciate everybody so much. I appreciate my staff that worked with us. But I really couldn't, you know, this is not a one-man show. This is a team effort. BKMB is totally a family, and for all the kids that are on here tonight and all the parents that are on here tonight, I just want to congratulate you. You guys did it. Thank you so much.
Well, we are so proud of you. Sarah, I have a certificate that I'm going to read, and then hopefully I can show it to you, and I will bring it to the board for you to pick up because we are so proud of what you and the children and the families did in such unusual circumstances. Great job. I can't tell you how proud. This is your Certificate of Excellence. Southington High School Marching Band, having duly qualified under standards prescribed by the Southington Public Schools, is hereby awarded the Certificate of Excellence for winning the two thousand and twenty Division III State Championship and witness whereof the Seal of the Southington Board of Education, the Signature of the Southington Board of Education Chairperson, and the Superintendent of Schools have hereunto ad fixed on this twelfth day of November, two thousand and twenty. And this is the certificate, Sarah. I don't know if you can see it.
I can see it. Thank you, Mrs. Carmody.
And I will bring this back to Ms. Albedis, who would be looking forward to giving this to you because you so well deserve. You've done an excellent job. I know the whole board, we want to applaud you, and thank you from the bottom of our hearts. Again, thank you very much, Sarah.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
And all the kids that are listening, thank you, thank you, thank you. We're so proud of you.
Thank you, Mrs. Carmody. So that was wonderful, and it's unfortunate that it went the way it did, but I'm very, very, very pleased that you were able to get so much out of this season. And we're always proud. We just, you know, we enjoy so much everything that BKMB does. Now, Mrs. Osias sent me a link, which I will forward to board members, and you'll be able to see the clip of the performance at states.
Oh, that'll be great. Thank you.
Look forward to that. I'll send that to everyone tomorrow.
Thank you. And just so you know, the video that we took for our state performance was our parent preview night. So you'll actually hear an audience clapping in the video, which is great. And parents, of course, I'll send that out to you guys as well.
Well, thank you, Sarah. Thank you for everything. And thank you, kids. Thank you, thank you.
Sarah, do you mind if I ask a couple of questions?
No, Mr. Brown. Of course you may.
Thank you. First of all, congratulations to Sarah and the whole band. I just, I see some names. I see Mike Bafuma there, and I'm pretty sure, Mike, your dad is Bob Bafuma, correct? I taught with Bob Bafuma when I started teaching. Is that?
Me too, Bob.
Is Mike there? I'm almost afraid to ask. Are you a parent now, Mike? A high school student?
Yes, Mr. Brown. My son Christopher is a freshman on the drum line. I am a parent of three children now.
That's awesome. Awesome. Well, say hi to your dad. Your dad was a great guy. We coached basketball together and taught social studies together. And can I ask one more question? I see Zachary Fodey. There's a John Fodey. Are you related? Is Zachary there?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, my aunt is Patty Altieri at DePaulo Middle School.
Okay.
Any other board members?
Congratulations to all of you.
Once again, from all of us.
Proud, yep.
All right, continuing on with our meeting. Thank you, Sarah.
I think we can also say, Mrs. Carmody, that certainly all the members of the Blue Knights Marching Band and the band backers are welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, if you would like. But I don't think that we will take any offense if you do not stay for the meeting.
No, we won't.
I would love to stay, but I'm going to put my kids to bed now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
There's no cookies tonight, so the incentive is lost.
Next time, next year when we win again, right?
Yes, when you win again.
Double.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, all. Thank you. Great job.
Next, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of our October twenty-second meeting?
Oh, moved.
All those in favor?
Who's second?
I didn't hear.
Zaya did.
Zaya? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Aye.
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 Next on our agenda would be approval of the minutes from the special, no, did I do that wrong?
The special meeting, yeah.
November tenth, excuse me.
Again, so moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have public communication. Mr. Canellin, is he here? There he is. Tim, any communications?
Let me check one more time to make sure. The last time I checked, I did not receive any emails with regard to public communication, and that continues to be the case at this point in time. So I did not have any emails for public communication, Mrs. Carmody.
Okay, and if you should during the meeting, please let me know, and we can go back to it, okay?
Yes.
Next communication for board members. Any board members have anything? No? Am I looking? Okay, continuing. Communication from administration.
Yes, Mrs. Carmody. Thank you. We have three items, but first, I just wanted to say, you know, we missed, we really missed our veterans this year.
Yes, I know.
You know, typically, we have such a wonderful time. We have multiple schools who have breakfasts and
Yeah.
all throughout the year, our veterans come in and they talk with our students, and they just do a wonderful job. You know, we have a Speaker's Bureau through them. And so we really missed them this year, and I just wanted to say a public thank you to the veterans in our community for what they do to support our schools and our students. And just a thank you to veterans in general. We just didn't have a chance to do that this year. And of course, Blue Knight Marching Band was just here, and usually, they do a wonderful concert that we weren't able to do this year. But next year, we'll be back, and we'll have our veterans back in our schools with us. And I'm sure Blue Knights Marching Band will be putting on another concert for our veterans.
Sure.
Thank you.
So, thank you. So we have three items this evening. The first is that we received our district annual performance report from the state. And what I've asked Mrs. Cavalero if she could provide subtitles for us or interpret the state speak into common language, since I believe I forwarded that to you. And sometimes, we don't always understand exactly what the state is talking about in these reports. So I asked Mrs. Cavalero if she could comment on that and just give us briefly what the report means for us, for Mrs. Cavalero.
Sure. So you've all, I'm assuming, received this from Mr. Canellin. And basically, what it says in plain English is that Southington is doing a really good job. Not just a good job, but a one-hundred percent good job when it comes to reporting for our students with disabilities. So each year, we have to report on a variety of indicators, whether it be timelines or different performance reports for students with disabilities and our variety of programs. So according to the eighteen nineteen Annual Performance Report, we were in the meeting requirement category, which meant we were one-hundred percent for all indicators. So although I was not in Southington at the time, that makes me very proud to know that our district does a fantastic job when it comes to taking care of students with disabilities and reporting to the state. So I'm very pleased to present that to you.
Thank you. Bob, I see your hand.
I have a question. As I read through the report, and I agree with Mr. Canellin, sometimes it's not real clear what the state's up to with the numbers and everything else. My thought was, are we seeing a different set of issues for students with disabilities because of the COVID and the back and forth? And has that negatively impacted our special education students?
When it comes to the report that we're talking about, that we got information on from the state, that this basically just talks about how we report numbers and how we're providing for students in a timely manner. The impact of COVID, we may see some different issues because of closings, and we may, just because of closing, may have not been able to meet timelines and things of that nature. But I think Southington obviously is not unique in that category. My colleagues across the state have said that will be impacted. But I think in other areas, we will continue to be very compliant.
Great. Good question, Bob.
Yeah, Mr. Brown, if I might interject something, I think we all feel that your concern is a concern for all of us. I think it's very difficult for students with disabilities at times. It's very, I know our teachers are working extremely hard. Our teachers, who are special education teachers, are absolutely knocking themselves out to try to make sure that they engage students, not always easy, and to help students move from point A to point B, also not always easy. And I think I've commented before, I was very surprised at the number of students with disabilities, the high number of students with disabilities whose families chose remote instruction right from the very beginning, and all for good reasons. That's not a, wasn't a judgmental comment on my part. It just surprised me. And I will say that some of our students who have some pretty significant disabilities, we've had in, even when we've had the rest of the school closed. So we've done that at the high school. We've done that, you know, at the middle schools. And I know that Rebecca and her team have worked with the building administrators on criteria, if you will, to establish criteria for students who need to be there every day if we're in a hybrid model, so to speak, and have been working on that and encouraging student engagement and encouraging students to be there and participate. So it's absolutely a concern that we all share, and I think it's a really difficult task. It's a really difficult task for parents of students with disabilities, and it's a really difficult task for our professionals, for our teaching professionals.
Yeah. Well, thank you for that answer. I knew we would do the best we could, but I just, you know, having taught and having students in classes that struggle with so many things, social things and stuff at the high school, it just occurred to me that this must be even harder on some of those people. So thank you for what you're doing with that.
Yes, I totally agree. Thank you.
So, Mrs. Cavalero, is that it? Are you all set?
That is it.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
For our next two items, we are going to turn to Mr. Madancy. So, Mr. Madancy, if you will, the District Diversity and Equity Leadership Activities. And the next one will be a comment on a recent middle school activity.
So, thank you, Mr. Canellin. So, an update on, I had informed the board a couple of months back that we had been part of a grant awarded through the Graustein Foundation for a district equity leadership team development. And that is an ongoing series of training sessions to date. We have met, we met October sixteenth, October thirtieth. We had two full days of training on November fifth and sixth in the Courageous Conversations Protocol. It was a model developed by Dr. Glenn Singleton. Many of our coalition members have kind of used certain tools within this protocol around the compass and the six agreements and the four conditions. And we also had a couple more meetings. We met again this week on the tenth. We'll be meeting right on through the twenty-second. And our charge really is to take the plan developed by the coalition and operationalize it. So for instance, a broad plan that says train all staff in X, Y, or Z, well, what training and when, right? It's trying to get down a little bit more granular. My goal is to try and then pull the coalition together and let them see kind of more of a drilled-down version of the last plan that they saw, so they can see more actionable outcomes, not such broad general statements relative to the coalition's work. The training has been wonderful. I know I got a ton out of it. And I think the collaboration amongst this group has helped me to feel comfortable being able to maybe have a little bit more of a distributive leadership model relative to this work, which should help it to go forward. So in addition to that, our school equity leadership teams at the elementary level are continuing where they left off in the spring. We have partnered with CREC, and they will be providing training to all of our school equity leadership teams at the elementary levels, all eight schools, on the anti-racist framework that would be employed in schools. And it's, again, it's a series of sessions and training over time throughout this year. So, you know, I just think it's important that we recognize this work needs to continue, regardless of whether we're in a pandemic now, regardless of whether we can meet in person or not, even if it needs to be done virtually, which is how the trainings have occurred thus far. And then lastly, just a big shout out to Lisa Volpe, the physical education teacher and girls volleyball coach at Kennedy Middle School. She has, since I was there, and I believe she started before I even got there, was a volleyball event, which is where they raise money for the Side Out Foundation, and it's a cancer awareness organization. They raised twenty-one hundred dollars virtually. They were able to, the kids were able to have a volleyball match. It was against DePaulo. They won, no offense, Mr. Pepe, but Kennedy prevailed. And it was a lot of fun. The kids, I will tell you, you know, regardless of who won, I was very impressed with the quality of play. Both teams were very good. And it was just fun to watch the kids to be able to compete in person together in a school event this year, despite the fact that we didn't have all the spectators and other students normally attending as we would because of the precautions we had to take. But I just wanted to celebrate that in-school event being able to continue because they're few and far between this year, and it was a nice opportunity to be in the building and watch the kids have some fun.
Well, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Madancy. Also, well, Mr. Paul Mary is on the call, too, so he has a little stake in that.
Sorry, Mr. Paul Mary. I didn't say anything about your school.
No, you didn't, and you hurt Mr. Pepe's feelings. I just want you to know that.
Oh, he reminds me often when the shoe is on the other foot. Don't you worry.
Better be careful.
Steve, we didn't have this on as an item, but we literally just found out about this. Would you like to comment on the, no?
No, we can't. It's a giant surprise that they'll be all informed about next week, but it's double top secret.
Double top secret. Okay, we'll leave it at that, then.
Oh, I love secrets, Steve. Tell me.
All I can tell you is there'll be a giant announcement at a school in our district next week with lots of members of the press and high-ranking officials present, but I can't share any more of that at this time.
Okay, Steve. Thanks a lot, Steve. You know, I used to like you, but that's over with. Mr. Canellin, is your report complete?
Apparently, we're complete, Mrs. Carmody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Canellin. Continuing. We have our finance committee report, and that would be my friend, Mr. Oceana.
The student reps first?
Students.
Oh, I'm sorry. Forgive me. I'm
Students.
Student reps. You see what, guys, I didn't read the thing correctly. Go ahead.
It's all right. Good evening, everybody. So, well, firstly, there was a student survey distributed to all high school students, gauging screen time and stress of students for the past, well, however long you've been in school for. Parents have also been sent a similar survey, and so far, the response rate is extremely high for both the student and parent surveys, for student surveys. It's, when I talked with Mr. Pepe, it was about fifteen, he said fifteen hundred students out of all Southington High School students, and for parents, the survey was sent out only a couple hours ago, and he's already received four hundred and seventy responses so far, I believe.
Oh, that's wonderful.
Yeah, it is wonderful. For a sports update, Girls Swim Dive added to their undefeated season by winning the CCC Region B Championships. The girls' cross-country team won the CCC Region B End-of-Year Meet at the Stanley Quarter Park in New Britain. And the boys' cross-country was runner-up in the same meet. And PSAT Day, some students were unfortunately quarantined, and there will be a makeup day on January twenty-sixth. Now I'll pass it off to Jolissa.
I don't see her.
Oh, maybe she's having connection issues. I haven't got
I know. She was there before, but I don't see her now.
I just got a text from her. Oh, she said her Wi-Fi just out, so I guess I will
Here she comes. Here she comes.
Oh, okay.
Yep, I just re-admitted her.
I'm so sorry. My Wi-Fi cut out right when I was about to talk. That's so funny. Okay. I have no idea where we left off. Is it my turn?
It is your turn. Yes.
All right. PSATs were the other day. Some students were quarantined, unfortunately, so they were not able to participate. And there will be no makeup day on January twenty-sixth. The high school also held SAT Day on November seventh, only for SHS students. An official ceremony for Unified Sports was November fifth to recognize them for their national ranking. A banner will be hung in the main gym. Quarter one ended Tuesday, November tenth. Teachers are finalizing grades to be approved in the next couple of days. The changing of the rotation of in-school days is starting January twenty-ninth, so students in opposite cohorts can participate in in-class lab days and so on.
That's it from the students. Anything else? Any questions from the board members? All right, no? All right, continuing on now. I can go to my friend, Mr. Oceana.
Good evening. So for the Finance Committee, we met back on October twenty-ninth. The first item on the agenda was the self-insurance report. And through September, the district is running about eight hundred fifty-six thousand dollars under budget. But for a variety of reasons, those numbers are probably artificially low, and will start to move up to normal levels relatively soon. So don't count on it staying that low. The next item we talked about was the leasing of an additional van to be used by the Maintenance Department. Adding this van, which would be a Ford T-250 Transit Cargo Van, will allow us to have more maintenance and electrician coverage in the district because the current van is going to stay in service while some, an older vehicle will be retired away. Mrs. Mellett explained the district's plan for funding replacement of maintenance vehicles by putting in two leases annually into our budget under the equipment rental line to keep the fleet turning over. The annual payment for this is going to be nine thousand three hundred and seventy dollars and fifty-eight cents, and it will be a four-year lease, and once that's over, the vehicle would be owned by the district. Excuse me. One question that did come up during the meeting was, would it be less expensive if we were to go out and lease the vehicle ourselves rather than working through the state bid price system? So Mrs. Mellett went out and got some information, got back to the committee, saying that the state price is actually based on dealer invoice, not the manufacturer's suggested retail price. And additionally, there was a flat-dollar type of a discount received as well as discounts in the options that range anywhere from six to twenty percent. So in final review, it was less expensive to lease through the state than it would be to go out on our own to lease a vehicle. Excuse me. Does anybody have any questions?
Do we have to take action on that, Zaya?
So if there are no questions, I'd like to move that we enter into a four-year lease to purchase the Ford T-250 Cargo Van for the Maintenance Department, as recommended by the Board of Education Finance Committee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone object? So that motion carries. Did I explain it all correctly? Okay, Mrs. Oceana, thank you.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda was leasing a wheelchair-accessible van for the stellar program. This lease was actually approved in our two thousand and twenty, twenty-two, one budget. The van is going to be used to transport students to job sites and to do other day-to-day independent living activities. The annual payment will be fifteen thousand six hundred and fifty dollars for a four-year lease. Doing this is going to allow us to expand the program and be able to keep students who would otherwise Doing this is going to allow us to expand the program and be able to keep students who would otherwise have to be transported out of the district, in the district. And if I did my math right, that saves us approximately $43,000 a year in transport costs for students. Does anybody have any questions about that?
Dave?
The, who is going to be driving the van? Did you hear me?
Yes. We have staff that are trained to drive the van through the stellar program. We have one of the job coaches is primarily, is the primary driver of the existing van. We have other job coaches that are able to drive.
Any other questions?
Anyone else hearing it, an echo, or is it just me?
No, I'm hearing it too.
Like there's music or something in the
Someone needs to mute who's not muted, maybe?
Okay. All right. So any other, any other questions? If not, I'd like to move that we enter into a four year lease to purchase a Ford wheelchair accessible van for the stellar program is recommended by the finance committee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Oceana.
All right. In our last committee meeting and then at the last board meeting, we talked about loaning the food service program $300,000. We had a lot of discussion about that at the finance committee and at the board meeting last time. We're ready to, to make this loan, but wanted to make sure that there is some sort of a repayment plan in place. As again, we talked about at the last board meeting. So the committee is recommending that if there is a profit of over $30,000 in a year, that the repayment decision would come back to the finance committee and then to the full board to see if the program is in a position to make a repayment on that particular loan. This way, we can determine how much they can pay back each year, or if that money instead of repayment would go back into a reinvestment into the program, depending upon how the program is doing. As, you know, the program's always been self sustaining. We want to make sure it continues to be that way, although with all the challenges this year, it's having a little difficulty. Does anybody have any questions about that? Bob?
Yeah, I have a question. If, what if it isn't enough money made? How does, how is the loan repaid?
If it doesn't reach that threshold, that particular year, there would not be a repayment made that year.
Okay.
Anybody else? Dave?
No.
I
We're not making any motion on this at this point.
Yeah, we will. Looks, Dave's got a question. Dave, Mr. Dernowski.
Sorry, Dave. I didn't catch you.
The, the likelihood, and again, I don't recall how well the food service department did, you know, as far as profits each year. Do you think 30,000 is too high of a number?
Mr. Oceana, I'd be happy to answer that.
Please.
So traditionally, the program is, you know, usually breaks even. Obviously, you know, you've heard a lot of dialogue about the issues with the 1920 school year. But the reason why we chose 30,000 is that we know that if there is a small profit of 10 or $15,000 in any given year, they're going to need that to restore their overall cash flow and cash balance. They also may be in a position to have to make some replacements of kitchen equipment. And so we thought that $30,000 was a threshold that really would be a, a point in time that would make sense to look at a loan repayment. It is very possible that they don't ever have a profit in the range of $30,000. And it's highly likely that this loan will not be repaid. But the thought process was in my conversations with the representatives from the state is that there would never be a repayment unless we caught, we consider this to be a loan and establish what those repayment terms are. So I felt it was important to at least establish something in the event that the program is able to be more profitable in the future.
Are we, and again, I don't mean it's naturally, but are we playing games with with the system with regards to, you know, having a a loan repayment schedule that we know will never be able to be repaid?
No, I looked at it as I didn't see the point of having the, I mean, the finance committee does review the financial statements of the program on an annual basis. But to bring up the conversation on an annual basis of whether or not there should be a loan repayment if there's a minimal profit. I didn't see the point of doing that. I feel like unless there is a substantial profit and knowing that there's many years that it runs at a small loss or a small profit, it's kind of a wash if you look at it from year to year. I, I think it's more fiscally responsible to look at a year where there's actually where cash may be building up. And then this way, the finance committee could determine from a cash flow perspective of making a repayment makes sense.
And so we just carry a $300,000 loan on our books?
No, we are, we actually are not carrying any loan on our books. The funding of this 300,000, you'll remember, is coming from the unexpended funds account on the town side. And in fact, if they were to make a repayment, we'd have to work with representatives from the Board of Finance and the Town Council on who would be receiving those dollars. Would that go back into a future non lapsing account? Would that go back to the town's general fund? So that is additional information that would be determined. But I can assure you that the, any repayment would not go back to the Board of Education operating budget because the operating budget is not making the loan.
That answer your question, Dave. Anything, anyone else? Sherry, I have a, this isn't related to that, but we talked at the last meeting about how many students were taking advantage of the free lunches and breakfast. How's that doing?
Yes, we're still seeing a good participation at the remote grab and go programs. However, I continue to be somewhat disappointed at the participation level at the schools, especially for breakfast. But when we did a comparison to the students, the number of students taking breakfast this year in comparison to last year, it's really not that far off. So basically what that tells me is students who are that don't have a financial need are not, are choosing not to participate in receiving breakfast, although they could at no cost. And, and also that plays into the numbers is the fact that we don't have students in school every day as you're seeing the information the superintendent is sharing with you on a, you know, regular basis. We have a number of students that continue to go, you know, we have the hybrid at the high school and sometimes they're remote. Other students that are now remote and that is certainly going to impact our customer base and participation throughout the year.
Okay. Thank you, Sherry.
You're welcome.
All right. So if there are no other questions, I'd like to move that the $300,000 payment to the food service program is a loan and that the repayment of principal be, will be considered if the program is a profit of more than $30,000 at the end of any fiscal year. The finance committee and the Board of Ed will review the financial statements and cash balances and make recommendations to the full board on the amount of an installment payment.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
So a piece of good news is that the district received the full amount requested under the coronavirus relief fund grant for $856,000. These funds, as you remember, need to be spent on reopening costs incurred prior to the end of this calendar year, many of which we've talked about several times at, at prior board meetings. So that's a good piece of news. And then lastly, we talked about the need to upgrade the energy management system at three of our schools in order to address ventilation issues and to do the, a nightly air purge, which is a COVID mitigation strategy recommended by the Connecticut Department of Education and Public Health Department. Mrs. D'Nello explained that all of our schools, except for three, the Agricultural Science Building, South End and Oceana Elementary have the ability to do this. So the upgrade can be covered by the coronavirus grant and would cost between 24 and $28,000 per school. The issue here is that the work has to be done by the proprietary vendor for the system we have in these locations. So we talked about that and the committee agreed to recommend that we waive the bid process and award the work to that proprietary vendor. Connecticut Temperature Controls, CTC, and allow the administration to move forward with these upgrades. Does anybody have any questions about that?
No.
Okay. So if not, I move to waive the bid process to upgrade the energy management systems at South End, Oceana and the Agricultural Science Technology Building and allow Connecticut Temperature Controls to perform the work as the proprietary vendor.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
That concludes our report.
Thank you, Mr. Oceana. May I add just one thing as informational to the board? So we did want you to move forward with this agenda item specifically. But this week we received some, an additional invoice from New Britain Transportation and we're in the process of negotiating with them over a cleaning time for cleaning of the school buses. And so we had no indication of what that dollar amount would be when the grant was originally written. And so this item specifically for the energy management was one of the ways that we wanted to make sure that we took care of all the known expenses that could be covered under the grant, like some of the salaries, the PPE and all of that. And then we were reading the terms of the grant to see if there were other needs in districts that could be covered under the grant. And this was one of those needs. But it will also be one of the last items that we would actually move forward with depending on the funding available. So like I said, we're going to see where we land with some of these additional expenses that are coming up. And we certainly hope that we're able to fund this project utilizing the grant funds. But we have a couple of items that we put into that grant as the, I don't want to say the, the nice to haves because obviously this is something that we have at some of the other schools, but making sure that we have the staffing and the PPE that we need throughout the school year is our first priority. And then this would be later on down that list. But all of the funding decisions have to be made by December 31st. So we wanted to make sure that we at least had the ability to move forward with these projects if the funds are available.
And so we did agree to all of that, Sherry, correct?
Yes. Yes.
You just further explanation. Thank you. So that concludes the finance committee. We'll move on to the personnel report. May I have a motion?
Move to accept the personal report as submitted.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Questions? Motion carries. Next is town government communications. Um, I, I have nothing. Does any board member have anything they need to say? Or Mr. Canelon, do you have anything you want? No?
I do not have any, Mrs. Carmody.
Okay, thank you. Next we have Mrs. Clark, I would imagine for our policy.
Yes. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve policy 1313 non discrimination community as recommended by the Policy and Personnel Committee.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Mrs. Clark?
Um, I'd like to move to approve policy 3281 Code of Conduct Child Nutrition Programs as presented by the Policy and Personnel Committee.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
This is where I miss Linda giving me all my motions. Move to, Linda C, I miss you. Move to approve policy 4118.112 Sex Discrimination and Sexual Harassment Personnel as recommended by the Policy and Personnel Committee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Next, move to approve policy 5114 Student Discipline as recommended by the Policy and Personnel Committee.
Second.
Dave, that was you? Okay.
That was Dave. Okay.
Yeah, I'm trying to write too.
You okay, Mrs. Clark? Cause I know you're a little slow. You okay?
Thank you, Mrs. Carmody for pointing that fact out.
It's okay. Anytime. I always like to help you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Um, moving on to new business, we have the superintendent's annual report, which was absolutely wonderful reading. I need a motion or I could have some discussion. I, I just want to tell you that I was me personally was extremely proud to read this. Um, it, it, it just was wonderful. Um, I, I wish, I don't know, Tim, is this published for everybody to see in the town? It is, right?
We, we, it's not only does it become part of the minutes, but we put it on our district website.
Right, right. Everyone should read it.
We haven't tracked the hits that we get on it. I don't know how it is.
Any other board members, any comments on, yes, Bob?
Yeah, I actually wrote out some comments because I was so impressed. I'm very impressed. I wanted to thank Mr. Canelon and the other people who wrote the reports. I called it Tolstoyan, if that makes sense. And that's meant as a compliment, not as a criticism. I love the diversity and equity work, which is mentioned in many schools. I love the, the fact that students are involved, not only with what's academic, but also the community service part and the the, the focus on social emotional learning. I was also proud and I'm involved with this committee of how we continue to bring forward updated and meaningful curricula despite the fact that we have all these other things going on. And I was especially amazed at how much our school system was able to accomplish considering the COVID shutdown and all the other things going on. This is a huge tribute to our staff and to our town. And the last thing, which I did say before the meeting, but I want to report, repeat, I found this very up, a very upbeat report and it, it was pleasantly not surprising, but pleasant to read it because it's so positive. And there are so many things to be proud of. And especially at a time when I don't know about you, but I'm suffering from what's it called? Fatigue, COVID fatigue. And I won't mention the person's name, but the president fatigue. It was, it was very nice to read something so positive and and something we're all part of and we should be so proud of. So thank you to not only Mr. Canelon, but also to the whole staff for, for producing such a enjoyable read and detailed read. Thank you.
Totally agree with you, Bob. Thank you. Any other board members? Dave?
Yeah, you know, I agree with Bob. I mean, the, the, the content was just great. Very uplifting. You know, over the years of all of the reports that, that I've read, you know, from, as districts have been coming together. I, I have to say that this year is kind of a reflection of last year. The consistency, school to school, it's so simple to read. You know, it's not confusing. I know in past years where every school put their own little caveat on, on how they laid it out and it was very disorganized. But I think Mr. Canelon did a great job in over the last few years to get this thing pulled together where it's easy reading. It's very concise, very straight to the point.
Right.
And very uplifting. And I have to say, I'm, I'm proud to be part of a team. Okay, that can actually go in and say, hey, read it because it's, it makes a lot of sense. And I, I think it's just a fabulous you know, picture of what the Southern School Systems is all about.
Yeah, you're absolutely correct, Mr. Dernowski. And, and to be so proud of so many people in this system. But to read this report, we all needed a smile and something to feel happy about during these times. And this report really did do that, I think, for all of us. So I thank Mr. Canelon and the entire administrative team. You guys work so hard. I don't even know how you even sleep, to tell you the truth. And our teachers and our students. And I'm just proud of all of you. So thank you. Any other board members? Comments? Mr. Canelon, are you a board member?
I'm not, but may, may I speak?
Yes, you may.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
And that, thank you for your comments. I, you know me, I like to put the credit where the credit is due. And I will say that the, you know, the report is just a reflection of what our folks do.
I know.
Day in and day out. And I typically read it much earlier and we work on it and we edit it, not as much now as before, as Mr. Dernowski pointed out, but our teachers continue to persevere through some very difficult circumstances and continue to provide our students with wonderful activities. And I've got to say, when I read that, I, I felt the same as what you've commented. It's just so positive and our, our teachers are on the front lines all the time and they're continuing, they They continue to make sure our students were engaged and were doing things that were meaningful, not just academically. But in, but in lots of areas. And our, and our building administrators lead that way. And our, you know, our leadership team is is exactly that. They're they're leaders. So it's really a huge team effort. Um, and I would be remiss if I did not say thank you to Mrs. Blanchard and Ms. Pagano. Who worked to put this together and put up with me not doing it. When they asked me to do it, which was late in the summer. And I just was so overwhelmed with our reopening and the activities associated with that, that I set it, I set it aside. I'm actually glad that I set it aside because I read every single word that everyone puts in there. Yes, we do continue to edit some things for readability, et cetera. But it was uplifting and to be able to look back and reflect on the things that happened last year in such a positive way. And make sure that the time from March through June did not define our school year.
Right.
It really did not define our school year. And I I took a lot of joy. In reading what was submitted by by our, by our leadership team. Uh, I I really did. And a lot of that is also from the, from each team, you know, grade level teams. They provide. Those with information, et cetera. So it was. It it was just enjoyable, even though it was a, you know, it was difficult to find the time to make the time to do that. It was very enjoyable, but the credit really belongs. In the, you know, at the hands of the of of the teachers and the building administrators. These folks really knock themselves out every day. And our content area coordinators, and I don't want to leave out Mr. Medancy, who drives that work. And make no doubt about it, he drives the work. Curriculum instruction is the heart of what we do, and that's what moves us from point A to point B every year.
Thank you. Thank all of you. Thank you. Very proud. Linda, you keep after them, Linda.
I'll move to accept the superintendent's annual report for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty as submitted.
Second.
All those in favor?
I.
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 Any opposed? All right, our lot, no, none were opposed, right? Motion carries. Um, our last item is the capital improvement. Uh, plan for twenty twenty one, twenty two, twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. This is going to be a first read to this evening, uh, Mr. Canelon, is that right?
That is correct, Mrs. Carvey. It is a first read.
First read, and I can ask board members if they have any questions or um. Because this is, we're going to be, this will be in our December agenda, correct?
Correct.
Well, if they have questions this evening, they can ask them, but they certainly can contact you in the meantime, I would imagine, Tim.
Absolutely. And Mrs. D'Nello, and I believe Ms. Mellett is still with us, who was the uh, architect of everything that you see in print.
Okay.
Or digitally, as the, as the case may be. Uh, either can answer questions certainly at any, at any point in time, but both. Uh, of those folks are available this evening to answer any questions that board members have.
And if I can just add, because I want to make sure that the board members know that there was a new update that was put on the portal um earlier today. So. You you have before you the five-year draft of the capital plan. And we did not include in that draft any of the information in regards to the high school athletic study. Um, originally because the board members hadn't seen it yet, but knowing that um, we were able to schedule that meeting for this past Tuesday. Mrs. Mellett did provide an updated uh, two pages that includes some of the cost. In regards to the master facility plan. Um, but we're still working on those numbers. Uh, as of even late this afternoon, uh, they were getting updated numbers from Castle Booze, and so. We wanted to at least put some of the information into the specific years. Because we know that'd be a conversation amongst board members about some of the priorities we have for twenty one, twenty two out of that study. And maybe some of the other priorities that might move into a later year and be can, it may be considered as part of a bonding project. So. And not to necessarily have that conversation tonight, but we wanted to bring it to your attention so that between now and the next board meeting. You can reach out and have those conversations and share your um opinions about what you're thinking after seeing the study.
Thank you, Sherry. Um, do I have any board members that have questions this evening? Um, or would we? Um, I I think it's a great idea for us to, you know, really look this over and um, bring our questions certainly to uh. Mr. Canelon or Sherry or um. I don't know who else.
Mellet.
Jennifer, yep. Okay. Mellet, um, Mr. Risser.
Uh, Mr. Risser, right. Um, and that was, you know, we had a very good meeting the other night. There was a lot of information, a lot to digest. It takes, you know, we really have to think about all of that. So, um. There's a lot on our plate right now. Okay? And then we start our budget season, so things become more complicated. Um, do I have any other board members that have any comments? Um, do I have Mr. Darrenowski ready to do what he's supposed to be doing?
Oh, yeah. Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
I.
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 I want to thank you all for behaving so well tonight. Um, hopefully you all stay well and enjoy the rest of the week.
Pretty happy Thanksgiving too.
We don't, we don't meet before Thanksgiving? No, huh?
No, no.
Well, happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Well, stay safe.
Be healthy.
Stay healthy.
And safe, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you all for what you do too.
Hey, everybody.